Good evening. We'd like to call to order the September 12th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. And as we begin, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does any Planning Board member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the board this evening? None? Then we'll proceed. We do have a quorum with six members present. Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda for tonight?
The, under old business, PB 23-19, that text amendment which was brought forward by Dinaat Mazinov, that has been withdrawn by the applicant. The applicant informed us that they no longer wish to move forward with that, so it can be removed from the agenda.
All right. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as, or the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Are there any changes to the August 2023 Planning Board Meeting minutes? If there are no changes, I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
Make a motion.
We have a motion.
A second.
And a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And for old business, that was removed from the agenda for this evening, so we'll proceed to the new business for this evening's meeting. First on the agenda is PB 23-24, Currituck County, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, to exclude public comments from evidentiary hearings. This amendment helps clarify that the purpose of evidentiary hearings is to gather facts and not to solicit public opinion and comment.
All right. Thank you. As you heard, this amendment is to remove the public comment portion from evidentiary hearings only. It still is relevant in legislative hearings. Just so you know, evidentiary hearings include preliminary plat, special use permits, appeals, and variances. Those are the four evidentiary. Public comment will still be in legislative, which includes things like text amendments, rezoning applications, planned development applications, and development agreements. So in those cases, public comment would still be present. So this text amendment was requested by the Board of Commissioners. It was submitted to staff to bring forward. What the amendment does is it gives two changes to Section 2.3.8, which shows the public hearing procedures. And I will go through the specifics here briefly. In Section 2.38A, this is the order of proceedings for a evidentiary or special use permit hearing. Starts off with presentation by staff, then presentation by the applicant, followed currently by the public comment portion, and this is what is proposed to be amended. Then there's the applicant response, staff response, and then a close to the hearing. What this amendment does is it adds in the public comment section one line that says "except for evidentiary hearings." So in all other hearings other than evidentiary, the standard listed here on the screen remains And I could read it for you, but it's up there. Basically just states that in, you know, in a hearing, a, any person other than the applicant or the applicant's representatives may be permitted to speak in accordance with the advisory or decision-making body's rules or procedures. So rather than having anybody have the opportunity to speak at an evidentiary hearing, the board will only now consider expert testimony. The second change that needs to be made is in Section B, which is the conduct of public hearing, and this section is the rights of all persons. And similar to the last, in the rights of all persons, the line is added "except for evidentiary hearings," therefore removing them from this section, which basically says that any person may appear at a public hearing and submit testimony either individually or as a representative or person of an organization. So they will still be able to do it in legislative matters, just not in evidentiary. Now, the board has requested this, knowing that there is still a public comment portion to a board meeting, and this is at the beginning of the meeting where anyone from the public can address the board, speak on any matter they feel fit. So the board, you know, the board's belief is that people can still come forward at that portion of the meeting, express their opinion on an item on that agenda. It just wouldn't be during the actual evidentiary hearing, when expert testimony needs to be considered. The board has been, you know, currently, there have been people that have gotten up during the evidentiary hearing and testified, and the board is, you know, telling them that, "Thank you for your comments, but they cannot be considered. We can only take expert testimony," you know, in this board. So they felt that it was, you know, by having that public comment section, it was misleading to the public, and therefore they wish to remove it entirely. Staff recommends approval of this application. Do feel that the request is in conformance with the UDO, as it clarifies the evidentiary hearing procedures, and that it is not in conflict with the Imagine Currituck Plan. And here are the seven text amendment review standards, and I will stand by for any questions.
And why is it that it can't be considered at, you know, if it were still allowed and this ordinance were not passed, why is it that it's only the expert opinion that can be considered?
Excellent question, and that is actually driven by state statute, the general statute 160D. And that states that in a quasi judicial, it functions very similar to a court proceeding. And because of that, the state tells that the board, who is acting almost as the judge in this situation, can only accept expert testimony by a qualified expert.
But people can't cross, basically, the examiner, the expert. There's no other opinion.
No.
So if something's said by the expert, which that nobody could predict in their opening comments, the three minutes that they're given, there's no rebuttal at that point. So something could totally come up that catches everybody by surprise who made the opening comments when they're allowed to make them, but now nothing could be said.
Correct.
And even if they could say it, it can't be taken into consideration.
Correct. And, you know, as it currently stands now, the public comment would be before the expert testimony. So really, even now, the public doesn't have an opportunity to address specific things that come up in the expert testimony. It is a system, the way the special use permit reviews, it is a system that makes it difficult for the public to oppose an application, you know, if I'm being honest with it, because of that expert testimony aspect of it. But, you know, you're absolutely correct, they wouldn't have an opportunity. And as it is now, there's no opportunity for a banter back and forth. The board is really the only, only one up there that can question the expert testimony. Even staff doesn't have the opportunity to do so.
Wow. Even if the opposing side had a lawyer, could not ask questions that could be considered to the, to the expert?
Are you saying the public?
Yeah. If the public had a lawyer.
If the public has a lawyer, then that lawyer could qualify as an expert, and they could bring a case and be part of the hearing. As long as the board rules that the evidence that they're bringing forward is expert and is, you know, deemed to be by an expert. And yes, they would have the opportunity to do so. What this, you know, this prohibits a, you know, if the neighbor wants to come up and, you know, just talk about their feelings or opinions towards the development, it doesn't permit that.
It's a tough one. The, so is there, is this decision of who's an expert and who's not an expert cannot be qualified ahead of time? It has to be done then as, as on the spot by the commissioner?
Yeah, I believe someone could probably contact, you know, contact us beforehand. Well, let me put it this way. Special use permits are evidentiary hearing, therefore the board cannot discuss the matter beforehand, and staff cannot discuss the matter.
No.
Basically, no. The board does qualify them as experts at the, at the hearing.
Interesting.
You know, someone couldn't off the street call a board member and say, "Hey, do you think I'm an expert? Here's what it is," because the board member would say...
Well, it saves people a lot of times if they're, and hassle if they're going to come to a meeting to know ahead of time that the expert they're presenting will be allowed to be considered as an expert.
Right. And I think our county attorney could advise, you know, could provide some advice on that and give some direction.
Okay.
I think that would be the best resource, which, you know, if someone came to us as the planning staff with that type of question, we would defer them.
So, so I kind of have a little bit like of some questions here. So I've been at these evidentiary hearings or these quasi judicial hearings. Number one, do all the counties in North Carolina do that?
No. Some include the public comment, some do not.
Okay.
You know, the way our ordinance is now including it, we're not breaking any laws, we're not going against state statute. It is at the discretion of each county as to, you know, that portion of the proceedings, whether they're included or not.
Can you go back to the, the list of how they order? Right there, back there. So, presentation of staff, applicant presentation, and then public comment. I have been at meetings where I've been in the quasi judicial process, and in that, a lay citizen at public comment during that public policy procedure has actually brought up information that while they're not a qualified expert, that the commissioners have actually asked the question of the applicant. Now that's going to be taken away from any input. Now, a person who is at that meeting usually is somebody who feels that they're going to possibly be hurt, their land value, whatever that is. Sometimes what the layperson or the resident who is, they tend to sometimes bring up information because they know the area. They're qualified for the fact that they know the property, they, some of them have been there years. So I think that it's probably not a great idea to take the public comment out. I know that it's not comfortable to hear that, but citizens, they pay taxes. I believe there should be a little more education in the application when the notification of the property owners and the adjacent property owners and the contiguous landowners get notified, that there's a little more education in that about what the judicial evidential hearings are. So therefore, they're not surprised when they come here and say, "Listen, maybe they just want to, maybe they just want to voice themselves." And it kind of comes with the territory of being in public politics. Maybe they just want, maybe they can't afford it. But then maybe, understanding the process prior to, and a letter that comes out to them for notification, they are able to hire an attorney or hire an expert witness. You don't necessarily have to hire an attorney. If you feel that your property is going to be damaged, is it a real estate agent that's an expert testimony, or is it an appraiser? So there are kind of questions that, you know, I just feel like the citizen is being pulled out of the process. And, you know, I kind of feel like we're, you know, you know, if we can educate the citizen a little bit more, and that education comes in prior to them coming to that meeting, and that would be the letter of intent that notifies them of the hearing that's going to take place, that allows the applicant to be a little bit more educated when they come before the commissioners. I have another question. Can a county engineer be a expert witness? He's an engineer. Can you call the county engineer, say if you're on drainage or something, can that person be an expert witness?
Yes, absolutely. As county staff, we are, we are viewed as experts in the county ordinances and what we regulate. For example, the last Board of Commissioners meeting, I was called as an expert witness on two of the cases. So, yes, absolutely. If a drainage came up that, you know, and the county engineer was requested to be there, the board could absolutely call them up, and they would be qualified as an expert witness.
Okay. Now, I just, my, my personal opinion here is, and it kind of feels like it's harder and harder to connect sometimes with your, you know, people work all the time. I understand that, you know, I just feel like if you can't go to your commissioners and air your grievance, you pay taxes, where can you? That's kind of where I'm at.
Any other questions for staff?
I just want to clarify just one thing you said, and I want to see if it, if it's still even relevant, because if you can make that public comment, which you currently can unless this gets written in, and you say that the commissioner could then hear that and ask something of the expert witness, but what you're saying is that really the commissioner can't use any relevance from that. So they just ironically had the same feeling, right?
Right. Well, the commissioners, you know, as it stands now in public comment, the public can get up there and say, you know, they have to stay on topic of what the item is, but they can express their opinion. You're absolutely right that if something came up, the commissioners could then say and ask the expert, "A, is this the case?"
But then that's taking the relevance of it.
Right. So they haven't taken, they can prompt that. However, if, let's say a neighbor is saying that, you know, "This is going to cause my yard to flood." And the expert, you know, engineer gets up and says, you know, describes all the stormwater, you know, methods and everything, the board could say, "Well, this person says that it's going to flood."
Oh, so they can use it?
"Do you think it will flood?" The expert witness could then say, "No, you know, because of X, Y, and Z." They can only consider what the expert witness says. They can't consider that that person said, "Hey, my yard floods, this is going to flood my yard." That's an opinion. They can't use that when they're making a decision and say, "Well, we're recommending denial because the neighbor's yard is going to flood." If the expert witness, if the expert testifies that the stormwater measures in place aren't going to flood that neighbor, that is the testimony that they have to, by law, consider.
However, if the question's presented in a manner where it's pretty hard for that expert witness to get around truthfully to, it's something he may not have brought up, and now he's being forced to bring it up. And it's coming from the public comment that was made during it, which is not supposed to be relevant, it's only the expert witness, but if the commissioner asks something that the commissioner, that the expert witness was not ready for, that was prompted by public speaking, you might get to a portion of it with the expert witness that they didn't want to go down. So I, I had to agree with some of this. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? All right. Any members of the public here to speak on this case? All right. At this time, we'll close the open portion and entertain a motion.
I, I'd like to present a motion of denial. I feel that it cuts out the public input, whether it, it's, I also, not only do I motion for denial, but I also would like to see more education on the document that goes out to notify the adjacent property owners to, for them to understand what a quasi judicial process is, so that they come to this meeting more educated and understand that should they speak to choose in a public comment, that they're only speaking to grieve their error, to air their grievance, that it cannot be, it helps knowing that upfront. So I move to deny this, and it's not inconsistent with input from the citizens.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it. Next matter on the agenda, PB 23-25, Currituck County, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 2, to clearly state that a special use permit application must comply with the ordinance. At this time, we'll hear from staff.
Hi. So the request tonight for the text amendment was initiated by planning staff, and it will amend Section 2.4.6D special use permit review standards. The text amendment will add the section that is underlined on the screen, and it states the use permit shall be approved on the finding the applicant demonstrates the proposed use is in compliance with the provisions of the ordinance and will adhere to the other additional standards that are already included, such as public health, adjourning properties, and meeting at a school facilities. We find that it also complies with the land use or the Imagine Currituck Plan and the land use goal one, which encourages development to occur at densities appropriate to the location, and also is supported by goal two, which considers the design and location an intensive and potentially incompatible land uses. Staff recommends approval, as we find the request is in conformance with the UDO, and the request is consistent with the goals and objectives outlined on the previous slide of Goals One and Two of Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan. Do you have any questions?
This is just cleaning up, just, is that, is this just kind of cleaning up the wording and kind of putting everything together to be cohesive?
Yes. It is mentioned somewhere, some other places in the ordinance that the application must comply with the UDO, and this perfectly states it in the standards.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Any members of the public wish to speak on this case? If not, we'll close the open meeting portion, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve PB 23-25 because the request is in conformance with the general purpose and the intent of the Unified Development Ordinance, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal one and land use goal two.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. This time, we'll move on to announcements.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to fill you in on some things that have been going on with the board at their August 21st and September 5th meetings. So at their meeting on the 21st, three things of note were approved. The first is a special use permit for a pawn shop in Moayok. If you are familiar with the 252 tires, the green building that shares space with the Shell Station, that, the green space will be a pawn shop. The applicant currently operates a pawn shop in Elizabeth City. It's in the shopping center with the Food Lion. It's got kind of a wood, you know, facade. They operate that. There really are no changes proposed to the site. They might give the building a painting, even though the green is, is very noticeable. So that was approved. A special use permit was approved for a development in Corolla. It is a development by Saga, and it is in Monterey Shores, and it's, I forget, 14, 13, 14 acres, vacant parcel. The proposal would be a hotel, commercial, and 127 multifamily units. So their goal is to kind of create a town center type feel on that parcel. So that was approved. And then lastly, a special use permit for 10 lots right next to Jarvisburg Elementary School. There's a little gravel street there with four lots currently that gets extended and it's a cul-de-sac development with 10 lots. That came forward to the board many months ago. There were questions about the sidewalk, and the neighbors, they ironed out all the issues and came back and got approved. Then on September 5th, another development in Corolla was approved, and that is, if you know the parcel just north of Timbuktu, right where that farm stand is, I think it used to be a coffee house, something, right now it's just a dilapidated building. Well, the proposal for that is to have a commercial space on the ground floor and two upper live-work dwelling units, so workers from the store would live above. So that was approved. The rezoning that you heard last month, nine and a half acres right next to LJ Beaners, the rezoning from AG to GB, that was approved unanimously. And then the text amendments you considered last month. The MIMs text amendment by James MIMs, that was approved exactly as you recommended it to the board. So portions were approved, portions were denied, but it was your exact recommendation. The Board of Commissioners amendment was approved, the dimensional standards for sheds was approved, and the adequate public facilities, which now only considers schools. You did go against that, but the board did approve it. Lastly, there is a retreat, board retreat coming up, August 4th and 5th, I believe are the dates.
October.
October, did I say August? That, that's because subliminally, I wish I had 11 more months to get ready for this rather than three weeks. But yeah, they will have a retreat, an agenda will be posted. Prior to that, I'm not sure how long, but it is in this room, and it will be open to the public. The only planning item I know that will be on it so far is they want to consider a small area plan for the Coin Jock area along the canal and stretching up into that existing commercial space. So I'm not sure. That's going to be a discussion. The staff will probably get some direction from them, and there may be other planning items too, but that's the only one I'm aware of so far. And then, lastly, just so you know, we have two special use permit applications coming forward in the next couple of months for new developments. One is New Bridge Creek Development, and that is, if you know the Realtors Office that used to be a, it's up a few miles north of here on the right-hand side. It used to be, I believe, a, yeah, consignment store, something, but now it's R&amp;R Realty, they fixed the site. Well, behind that, on the parcels behind that, right now they're 10-acre parcels. They are proposing a 35 subdivision homes there. This is one that came before the board a while ago. It was denied because of expert testimony, because they didn't have an appraiser to speak to home values. They changed the application. I think they took off a couple lots, reoriented it, and brought it back to the board. So that's coming forward. And then a, another development, which is off Tolls Creek Road, right by Panther Landing... right by Panther Landing, but on the other side of the road, and that's for 13 lots, it's called Wilson's Ridge. So those are the two subdivisions that we have coming forward. And so that just, just so you know, keep you informed, and that's what I've got.
Do you know anything about the Saga, like the hotel they're putting up?
Yes.
What is, is there a height restriction on a hotel?
There is. They are proposing a three-story hotel, however, the way our ordinance reads, the restriction is 35 feet within 100 feet of residential. Now, where the hotel is located on that, it is adjacent to the Whalehead, single-family homes in Whalehead. So as it stands now, the back portion of the hotel would be limited to 35 feet in height.
What about the front portion?
The front portion, there is a max, actually, I don't think there is a maximum. If there is, it would be 75 feet, 100, I'd have to look at the ordinance, but...
So we could potentially have a high-rise there?
Could potentially, yes. However, the proposal is for three stories. And there may be a text amendment coming forward to try to allow for the whole hotel to be three stories, to encroach into that 100 feet, but as it stands now, it would have to be a stepped hotel, where it'd probably be two stories in the back, three stories up front.
Okay.
And there is a height requirement, it's not, I just, off the top of my head, I can't remember it, but it would be at least in the 75 feet range.
Still pretty high.
That's, that's pretty high, yes.
I don't have that all memorized.
Yeah, I don't, do we have that anywhere in the county already?
Um, no, no, I think, you know, we have the Hampton Inn is, and then we have a few smaller hotels, but that's only three stories.
I thought it was only three stories, right.
I know there was a proposal, and this was well before my time, so I'm kind of out of my lane in this, but Ocean Sands, there's a vacant parcel, a large vacant parcel in Ocean Sands, and there was a development proposal at one point that I believe had a high-rise hotel, seven stories or so included in that, but that was years and years ago.
Okay, and you say the sheds were approved, right?
Yes.
Were based on that?
Yep.
Is the language out on that now? I mean, is it written? I think we saw an introductory to it.
Yes, the language, it'll be, it takes a little time to get uploaded into the code, but if you did look at the agenda, the language in the agenda was approved, so, you know, if you remember correctly, it was 200 square feet, three acres or less, above three acres, 400 square feet, and on an ag piece of property, 50 acres or more, it was 1,500 square feet.
And then, finally, the, the small dilapidated shed that used to be the coffee shop?
Yes.
And what size building is going there?
Oh, I want to say about 2,000 square feet.
Okay, and that's two stories, right?
Two stories, so I think it's about 2,000 square feet, ground floor, and then two upper-story dwelling units.
Okay, and if I heard you right, the upper-story dwelling is the worker, worker-owner, whatever...
Yeah, the, the live-work unit.
Yeah, okay, so is, is that a special category? The way you said it, it sounds like a special category.
It is, there are, actually, our ordinance has two different kinds, it has an upper-story dwelling unit and a live-work unit. The live-work, one of the things it allows, the parking requirement is less because of the shared uses, and, you know, so, but it is its own, own category in our ordinance.
How do you enforce that over time? Just curious. I mean, they sell, they sell the building or whatever, and is it still a live-work?
Well, I, you know...
I'm not going anywhere with this, I was just curious.
Well, it is a difficult thing to enforce, you know, a lot like we have our family subdivisions, you know, we don't have, let's say, the person builds the live-work unit and it's all, and then sells it. You know, we don't have a trigger with, you know, real estate or tax or anything, we don't have a trigger that says, "Hey, this property was sold." So, I mean, enforcement would really be a complaint or seeing that it wasn't being used in that matter, and then we could go, you know, because they'd be in violation of their special use permit and the UDO, I mean, we could pursue legal action against them at that point, but, you know, we don't have, there's nothing that says that owner has to hold on to that property.
Right, right, okay, so it would really be a trigger or something like you described, okay?
Right, yes.
I was just curious, that's all.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, any other announcements?
No, that's all I've got.
Then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
We have a...
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'll get back.